It's okay.
Same time Chris is on.
And Chris is on also.
Yeah, I got a big box of Kleenex over here.
And respectfully, would you read us in the pledge?
We have a pledge. Please stand up. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we'll be really nice to him tonight if we can because we're very sad to see him go, very sad. We have two people who'd like to make public comments. I just want to remind everyone that this meeting may be videotaped and we should be aware of that. And during public comments, according to our board bylaw 9323, you have the opportunity to speak. And we do not have the opportunity to have a dialogue with any speaker because you are not agendicized. And the only dialogue the board can have, this one needs to be agendicized. We can refer comments to our superintendent and our assistant superintendents to report back to the board and concern people on the issue.
Madam President?
Yes.
I don't, I think that, just for clarity, Sig, we could ask clarifying questions.
Clarifying questions. Absolutely, Mr. Thompson. Thank you. But we cannot have dialogue.
Take any action. We can't take any.
Persons wishing to address the board or requested to fill out the request to speak slip and give it to our secretary, Ms. Serna. And the slips are available at the reception counter. At this time, I'd like to call up Andrea Ruxton, Ruxton?
Yes, okay. Reece.
Reece.
Yeah.
Thank you. Welcome. And she would like to speak to the topic, open enrollment transfer party regarding address verification.
Thank you. Yes, I'm guessing this is where I stand.
Okay. Good job.
I'd like to introduce myself. You already introduced me, but I am Andrea Reece. And Mr. Hubby and Mrs. Shurmann might recognize my name because of my attempt to submit an item for tonight's board agenda. Apparently, I was a little too late in submitting that, but I wanted to take the opportunity to request that the board give consideration to the issue of address falsification in our district at a future board meeting at some time. Please allow me to explain my concerns. My daughter has been denied reentry to Beachwood School for the first grade because of an unusually large number of new students claiming residency in the school's attendance area. Five of these families produced addresses after their transfers were denied. Address falsification is a growing problem in the Fullerton School District, and I've had one FSD teacher confide in me that as much as, in his opinion, 30 to 50 percent of people claiming residence in Beachwood's attendance area are lying about where they live. If this person is anywhere close to being correct, the problem is of monstrous proportion. I have also learned that Beachwood is not the only school experiencing this, with Fissler and Laguna Road having had large problems in the past and continuing problems. I have met with Beachwood's principal, Mrs. Graham, and I've met with Dr. Craig Birch just today. I also met with Mr. Mark Douglas about the matter. It's my belief that each of these individuals has done what he or she was able to do to assist me in my situation, but the concern actually rises to the board level. One of the problems seems to be that there are no deterrent penalties in place to discourage address falsification. And I think it's time that perhaps we could look at creating some type of a penalty that is commensurate with the crime and that can actually be imposed. There are other things that the board would be able to put in place, such as budgeting for home checks or even simple in-office research. I have suggested that FSD create a website or a hotline that allows people to anonymously report families who may be falsifying. Other districts in California are going to great lengths to stop this crime. I have done some research and discovered that San Francisco has recently gotten very serious about having families correct addresses. Napa Valley has also recently cracked down. I know that our district shares the concern for honesty and integrity that these other districts seem to have, so I'm asking that a discussion be opened for hearing about this. Address falsification is not a victimless crime. Innocent children whose parents have chosen to be honest are suffering for their honesty. We are sure this is not a state of affairs the school board would knowingly endorse. I hope that you will take the time to review my submission to the board and add an agenda item for an upcoming audit meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Just for clarification, I've been in San Diego at a conference and so I haven't seen you anymore.
Well, you'll be excited to see one of my references is in Lowell High School.
Oh, okay. Great. Now, Mr. Reece. And we're speaking to the same panel. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just want to speak as a father of my daughter Hannah, who upon learning that she was not allowed to attend Beachwood School, she was very distraught. And she's been, actually, she's fallen ill twice since then. And the day that she found out about this, she fell ill. And today, she fell ill as well because she's kind of heard, and the rumblings kind of us preparing for tonight that we would be talking about this. And I just want to say to the parents out there that they think twice about falsifying their address when trying to attend schools in the district. I believe that they're doing a lot of harm in doing that. I would ask that they take a moral stand and that if they are doing this, I make a public plea that they would stop. And I make a plea to the board as well that you would stand behind us as parents, obviously concerned about our children, doing the right thing, being honest about attempting to, you know, gain entry into these schools through the proper channels. And I would say to you that, you know, these parents are basically usurping your power and your authority. They are doing this knowing that the consequences are little. The consequences that I understand occur at this point are that they're no longer able to attend the school that they were falsely trying to gain entry into. And that's not much of a deterrent, in my opinion. So I, you know, humbly ask the board and would like them to review the policy and in speaking with some other people in the district, both at a district level and at a school level, that there be more teeth put into this policy, as my wife has suggested, that there possibly be fines imposed or something to where people who are falsifying their address would encounter some sort of significant penalty. And it'd be a deterrent for them or for anyone else to do this in the future. I really don't know what will happen to my daughter, but I would hope that any of the honest people in this room, too, would not have this problem in the future and that something could be done to rectify the situation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sir, may I ask you a question? What is your school of residence?
Our school of residence is Golden Hill.
Thank you. I'd like to refer this now over to our superintendent to tell our new superintendent we're looking into this and to Mr. Douglas to give some more follow-up on this. I'm thinking that this family probably is on the wait list.
Correct.
And, thank you.
I'd just like to make the rhetorical comment that, and I'm sure all of us feel the same way, we're very sorry that your daughter is enduring this. Whether it's legitimate or it's not, it's a very painful thing to endure, and we're sorry.
Napa was mentioned as a school district that we might investigate rules. That superintendent spent the last 48 hours with me at the ISTI conference, so she knows Fullerton and recommend maybe contacting that school district.
The families gave me several contacts, and I'll gladly go to those as well.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Douglas. Now, I have a super, super great fun thing to do. I look forward to doing this because we have a supporter in the Fullerton School District, Mr. Pete Barrett, who gives so generously of his time and his energy in support of our students. Mr. Barrett, you've had some amazing news to share with us tonight. Could you please?
My pleasure. Thank you for the applause. You may not applaud after I finish. Better get it while they're at it. Dr. Hubby, you might need to see go. And board, thank you for the opportunity to present, tell you a little bit about the chess program in Fullerton that the Lions has now going for the last 10 years and also present the Fullerton City Re-Level Chess Champions. I hope there was a PowerPoint presentation up there that you might want to look at. Glad you took that stuff to read. This is basically Fullerton's Lions Chess Program from 2002. And it's, and it entails weekly chess clubs that over 10 years have covered 14 different schools at various times for different periods. Sometimes skip from one school to the next and expose as many kids as possible to the opportunity to play some chess. Weekly chess workshop, which initially was just a few times a year, and then more recently because this is the opportunity for kids other than those attending schools or chess clubs to gain help to actually play the game. So that's weekly, that's how that blog got popular, and people subsidizing the bank to thank them for making the facilities available on a weekly basis. We also have annual scholastic tournaments. One of those is the Morrison Scholastic. This is actually a tournament that started 37 years ago and it's been run by John, John by the name of Dwayne Barber. He has basically run the tournament, but three years ago, when he asked us if we would be willing to host a tournament in Fullerton, Dr. Hubby agreed to that. And for the last few years, we've co-sponsored the tournament. And basically, the Lions provides insurance coverage and some assistance, Fullerton schools to make the facilities available. It's a great experience. I will have some data on how successful that tournament has been. Then on a yearly basis, since 2006, we've had a Fullerton City Chess Champions. That, the first one, Morrison Scholastic draws from all over Orange County and even Los Angeles area. People coming from LaPlanta, Irvine, Hoover's Side, all over the place. The Fullerton City Chess Champions, attendance is limited to only Fullerton students or people that live in Fullerton. So that has also been pretty successful, and I will thank the observer, which almost after each of these tournaments, give us about a page cover, which is very nice. Really does help, but encourages parents to see their kids' picture and encourage other parents who might otherwise think about chess, hey, might click in the description to get the two.
Yes.
Okay, then we have, for eight years, we ran Fullerton Junior High School Middle School Team Championship. And associated with it was a plaque, traveling plaque, that was displayed at the school that won the championship that year. I can tell you that all eight slots are now filled in the plaque. I've never been so happy getting this plaque finished in Oberholtz and not have to herd a bunch of junior high school students to show up on a given date and play chess. We like to play chess, but we're not curding cats. Anyway, Parks won the tournament five out of eight times, so they will keep the plaque. So over the last 10 years, we've had probably over, well over $3,500 of Lions volunteer, or Lions volunteer hours. And this is going to go, $3,500 of Lions volunteer help with Alex's support. The Alex's supporters are represented by John Darling. Okay, well, this is some more detail. We have $5, this year, we have $500 for school and junior high schools, three chess clubs, three, two our workshops, and two Lions and Jazz tournaments. As you mentioned, that Morrison Scholastic has 153 kids. 25 of those were in Fullerton. And what played with the Lions is a trophy, better than the others. Who was the chess champion? You have 45 kids who are all playing. Okay, now the chess clubs, you think of chess clubs again, most people come here, fix notion where chess club is. I tell you that every chess club is different. Basically, the two types, those that are after-school and is getting the rest of the hour and a half, and those that are during lunchtime. And during lunchtime, we may have a case of chiseler, we have over three months period, we have 150 fists show up and all around and play chess. Also, they'll be on the screen and push and show. Especially the first graders. Don't worry, you have a first grader denied playing chess if he wants to. And I'll pass another piece of, specifically, just an example of the, simply, score sheet for the chiseler and fern each other two lunchtimes. So we sign up lots of kids, they all play, and if they show up four times, then they get a nice little teaching piece that keeps them coming back. On occasion, on Golden Hill Laguna Road, we've had one hour after-school program. Except Laguna Road, we had a two-hour after-school program. And there I had someone helping me, which was kind of wearing me down because there were 20 kids and they ranged from third graders to sixth graders. And that's a wide range and it's a tough bunch to handle. But we've had a very, we had, and that number after each school represents the number of months for which the program was run. The junior high schools, we had, there are very little activity. This year, Nicholas, the help of John Darling, we had every week for six months, we had chess tournament. In fact, John, the Lions made a contribution to make the winner of that tournament $150, which we thought would get the kids all excited, and they were excited for a while, but then after they realized that $50 is not likely to be theirs, we got paid enough. Anyway, we did get $25, $25. And the Parks were a pretty very strong program. And the right-hand side, you see the people that were champions for each of the schools or tournaments were run. There were four schools with tournaments, five schools with tournaments. And in some cases, like at Laguna Road, there was a three act and three separate tournaments. One for the girls, one for the third and fourth graders, and then for the sixth graders. Okay, now here are the city chess champions. And I'd like to do a, if someone's, someone helping you, if you have a question.
I have a, I have a.
Turn this over to, to the chairman. It's been a long time, a long time, a long time before we were chess champions.
Why don't you introduce yourselves? First, we have Sarah, Hannah. Come on, come in front of you.
Sarah.
Come on now.
Sarah is an excellent chess player. She's been the winner, either the winner or second place. One time she was second place, the rest of the time she won the grade-level championship since she was fourth grader. She's now in Parks. She won the, in the previous slide, you might have seen her name pop up as the winner of the, as a seventh grader of the Parks Junior High School Chess Championships. And the only problem is that her trophy is lost, but we're working on recovering it. So Sarah, congratulations.
And your board would like to give you a certificate of excellence for your accomplishments. Do you have anything you'd like to say, or a parent or someone you'd like to introduce? Who's with you this evening?
That's my mom.
Hi, Mom. Mrs. Young? Yes? And do you love chess?
Uh, yeah, I do. My brother actually introduced me to this.
Well, we're pleased to see how you've accomplished the mastery.
By the way, her brother is a very good chess player. He had been at Parks Junior High School, he played chess at Troy. He's also, I believe he was the California Spelling Bee Champion. What do you know? Is that correct?
He's a barber.
Not much, yeah, no.
Sorry?
A barber now.
Well, we all have our problems. Okay, thank you, Sarah. Okay, by the way, I should mention that her name, this year, we had something that we have never had before, which is a super champ tournament. And one of the reasons is that this is a tournament in which only people that have rich chess ratings, but passed out by the United States Chess Federation, or they came in first or second at the grade-level tournament sometime in the past few years. The particular person, reason for doing it, and that is that as a second grader, he was an excellent player. And he actually played as a super champion.
Wow.
Now, he came in fifth, but actually, he actually had a shot at coming in fourth. So Sarah played as a seventh grader. She was the only elementary school player that won. Came in over eight people. It's a very tough tournament.
Good girl. Congratulations. We like that.
The seventh grade champion this year is Iman Baal. Iman, come up.
Nice.
Iman, Iman, as Sarah kind of toggles back and forth, sometimes Iman comes in first and sometimes Sarah. Look there, she's an excellent chess player. She's from Arbormont, Montessori, and so congratulating.
Thank you. And we want to recognize your excellence, and we're excited to see two young ladies winning the junior high category. Congratulations. Do you have anything else you'd like to say, something you'd like to tell us about chess?
My father is video-talking a moment of pros.
Hi.
And my brother, Ashton, was the fourth grade champion.
Hi.
We'll see.
And we are very proud of all of you. Does your father know how to play, by the way?
Oh, good. Better than I do.
Good. Okay.
Okay, next is Isaac Kim. Isaac is the only person, only person represented because he did it well, but he had a very exciting tournament. It was a very small tournament, there were only four people playing, but three of the four people are pretty good players, and they tied for first place.
Wow.
So then they played a round, and they tied for first place again.
Oh, my.
So by this time, it was 40 to 10, and I said, boy, not gonna waste another quarter and a half. So they had to play a five-minute speed chess game. It's round robin. So Isaac, who's a pretty good fast player, doesn't always sink as long as he should, but he's very good at playing fast. Congratulations.
Isaac, congratulations. Do you have anybody you'd like to introduce, or a comment you'd like to make, or both?
I want to thank God for giving me this opportunity to send this tournament.
Your dad supports you in this. Thank you. It does help the tournament.
Okay, next is a person that I haven't seen before, before I saw at this tournament, is Nathan Park. Played a pretty tough tournament. He's representing Hermosa Drive. He's one of the few people from Hermosa Drive, so good job, good job, Nathan.
Nathan, a certificate for you. And do you have someone here this evening?
Yes. First off, I'd like to thank my sister, because I wouldn't have known about this tournament unless she brought home that honor.
Okay, sister.
I'd like to thank my mom and my grandparents back there.
Hi. And they came so far. Congratulations. Wonderful.
Okay, now, this is why publicity is such a difficult task, because fourth, fifth, and sixth graders take a piece of paper, that's a chest, and they crumple it up. And if it blows up in their fists, you don't need to pay attention, otherwise it gets stolen away. Then they depend their little sisters to, you know. Okay, our, actually, let's see, I want you to, okay, third grade. We have a gentleman from, very good staunch member of both the Laguna Road Chess Club and also he's a steady attendee of the workshop, Cash Wiley.
Wow, that's my girl.
By the way, I should mention that Cash is also on the side getting some help from time to time from the gentlemen who started helping me at Laguna Road this year, Joe Scherzinger, who's a very good player. Cash, if you pay some attention to the intelligence, you're going to be pretty good.
Third grade, oh, go ahead.
Okay, go ahead. Third grade.
Third grade champion. Wow. Congratulations, Cash.
My dad's over there.
Hi, Dad.
My mom's and my sister.
And your sister's really excited about it. Did you have to talk your sister to play yet?
Yes.
Okay. How old is your sister?
Five.
All right. Do you love that? Okay, thank you.
Some talent coming up. Then we have another person from Laguna Road, Anthony Carr. Anthony won the tournament, which was, we didn't end up first graders this year, so we combined first and second grade. So he won the combination. He's a second grader, and he came out victorious. Congratulations.
Congratulations. That's wonderful. Look at these second graders doing so amazing. Is that exciting or exciting? Congratulations. Oh, Drew, somebody you'd like to introduce?
That's my mom and dad, and those are my two sisters.
Welcome. And your sister now.
My twin sister.
And she allows you to beat her now and then?
Yeah.
Good. What a family. Awesome. We expect next year, a tie up here.
Okay, now this gentleman, Henry Tang, I guess he, his dad asked him, why would Henry show up when he didn't win anything? I told him, the second grader who plays against high schoolers, the super champion, deserves some credit.
Oh, my gosh.
So that's Henry. You will see, you will see his picture in a couple of minutes. I showed some pictures of the super champs. You'll be able to tell very easily, you can tell. Anyway, very, very remarkable way you ran. Okay, our girls' champion, this is first time ever, girls' first through fourth grader champion, Julia Schenk.
I'm proud of you. Could you please give us a couple of words here? Maybe your family or anything else you'd like, any words of wisdom?
My mom's up there.
Hi, Mom.
And they helped me learn about chess.
Thank you.
Next, she was going to play the chess club, right?
Great. Well, we are very proud of you. I have one more certificate to give out. I have one more certificate to give out. And, where did you go? I have one more very important certificate. As you can see from the hours presented, and the love for these students, this gentleman is an exceptional gift to the Fullerton community. And Pete Barron, we want to give you a gift of recognition from our school board to you, because we are so blessed to have you as part of our community with all the wonderful things you do. Do you think he does good things?
Yes.
Would everybody hold their certificate forward?
Name your trophy.
You need to make sure you group together so you get your name.
Where's our fourth grade champion? Did we lose her?
Yeah, she's over.
She's over.
Okay, hold it, one more.
Go ahead, we want, we want a picture, a group picture.
Short people with the flag.
One of the things, one of the things I do, I always, I always mess up, okay? I mess up big time. This is a picture of all the elementary school winners. Three other certificates I'd like to give out after we take the picture, and then I'd like to have, after we take this picture, I'd like to have the three super champion, first and third place winners to come.
Mr. Barron, did we neglect a fourth grade champion?
Fourth grade? Let's see, where is the fourth grade?
Well...
Where is the fourth grade?
Up on your board, right there.
Come on up! Come on up! Did I not give you a certificate? We will get you one, right? And we'll get your address, and we will mail it to you, but come and stand and tell us the names, girls, thank you.
Sorry, I forgot.
Tell us the name of your family, tell us about your family, and how long you've been playing chess.
I don't remember, but, uh, half as same as my sister, plus my dad there, and then my sister's dead.
Oh, no wonder why she recognizes you. You know, and it's, sometimes sisters don't do that. Thank you. And, so at your house, do you play a lot of chess together, you and your sister?
Sometimes.
Sometimes. Do, do you let her win sometimes?
No.
Oh, come stand next to Mr. Barron, right back here. Hold your trophy up high.
I meet him every time that's by.
No, we don't want any sibling discussion. Will you come stand on the side, Sarah, so that we have balance and height a little bit? Right there, and these, and parents, you can take as many pictures as you want, these are our champions, and we're so proud of them. While you're taking pictures, I will admit that Mr. Barron taught my sons to play chess, and some strategies, and they talk to each other just like this lovely family speaks to each other. They, they play for money, but they never, it never changes, but they know after twenty years exactly who will vote as whom to come up. That is a true story. Pete, would you like to continue introducing your, your...
Yeah, could I, could I now introduce the two?
Yes.
Fourth City Chess Champion, a question only, Andrew Keel, who's a graduating senior entering to US City.
Come in the picture, please.
Sam Bressler, Sam, come on up.
Yay! Sam, come stand a little closer. Tell us, how many people did you have to defeat in order to become the city champion?
Um, a lot, a lot of people, yeah.
Actually, we, we had a totally complicated Swiss tournament, in which, as long as you keep winning, you don't have to play a lot of games. If you lose, then you have to...
Okay.
But, but I should mention that Andrew is not only the winner, city champion, by virtue of this tournament, he also just happens to be the very best chess player in Fullerton overall now.
Wow!
His background is better than I am, and he's had an awesome rating, and I'm glad he's out of town, because maybe I'll recapture...
Some, some status.
I might be, I might be the first.
And, and tell us, are you, are you graduating? Okay, so you have a chance to meet Pete next year.
Not...
Good luck!
No, 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 I'm not gonna play, no, no problem.
We'll make him play you. Congratulations to all of you, thank you. We have, we have another comment to make, and we'd be happy to hear.
Um, I just wanted to, um, first thank my father right there, Michael, um...
Yes, my dad.
He teaches me how to play, um, chess in the first place, and I also want to thank Mr. Barron right here. Um, as an immigrant here to the United States in 2007, I was not able to speak English. Um, so, Mr. Barron here, um, he still accepted me, even though I couldn't speak, uh, very proper English, and then he taught me the language of chess, so, and then I don't need English to communicate with everyone, so he gives me the key to, um, to the door of becoming, um, making friends, and then be part of the school. And then, so without him, I wouldn't be here, standing here, receiving this award, and I wouldn't be competing in national tournaments, and without him, I wouldn't be able to do what I love to do, the most, in chess.
You are a good learner of English. Your English is fine. Did you want to say something?
Oh, my dad's there in the background.
Hi, Dad! Welcome! No, without the support of family, you kids can't stay after school, you can't make it to the tournaments, and you probably would take other directions, and we appreciate all the efforts of your families to make this happen for their students. As you know, there are some colleges in this country where these students can get full access because of their chess abilities, and we, we value that Mr. Barron allows them to develop in that direction.
Thank you very much. Let me just say one more thing about Andrew. Besides everything else, he's also somebody who comes to our workshops whenever he gets a chance, which is, to run up a 4.5 average in high school with, you know, marginal command of English at the start is no small feat, and so it's been pretty busy, but whatever he has a chance, he comes down and helps us with a workshop, and gets, gets charged up, the bigger, better thing.
Where did you junior high went here?
Parks.
Oh, it's because of Parks teaching him so well. Your family, I think Mr. Barron has a couple more words.
Okay, we've got five, four minutes. Okay, the next four minutes, uh, close some photographs up here. These are photos from the tournament, so recognizing not only the winners, but some of the, some of the other kids that played. This is the seventh, seventh grade tournament, amount of left. There's the three, three guys in red, like, they're pretty fast. This is the, uh, fifth grade, fifth grade tournament, seventh grade, and, uh, also about to, uh, there's some action, action photos. There's Ryan Kennedy from KSH. There is, uh, let's see, this is the fourth grade. Second graders. Third graders. Not too much, fourth or third graders. And there's girls here. By the way, girls have, three girls tied for second place. That's the, uh, sixth grade. And there's the, uh, fourth grade. I think one of the problems was they played a lot of draws, and the reason they played the draws is because someone was in a little checkmate. I'd be a half by a king or by a queen in a rook, but can't checkmate, you can't win a game, so it's a draw. So we played half the games were draws. Okay, let me just, thank you very much. Once I'm in the podium, I'll work on it.
I know that, I know that. Come on up, big guy.
Big guy.
So you got a chest there?
Okay, I'm, I'm a member of the Science Education Council, it's run by Becky DeRigo, and, uh, a couple, a couple of weeks ago, I took the time to take all the test, science test scores that I've been able to really do in the last twelve years, and averaged them out. I mean, you, you show all these test scores, but you never show the average. Well, the average shows that, starting about twelve years ago, where average was about thirty or thereabouts, and every year it went up and up, sometimes by big jumps, sometimes slow, it's now about seventy-four, I believe. And I had a nice chart of the five that I lost, but it's, but it's, but it's, I think it's a remarkable improvement, so...
More than double.
More than double. In addition to, uh, showing our appreciation for the Fullerton's lives, your strong support for the live chess program, for the culturalistic, and for your contributions to improving the science education in this district, you're certainly a huge fan.
You know, um, we're not going to give you an award, okay? We're going to give you memories, and we hope that you take them lovingly with you as you leave our school district. We want to thank you for being a wonderful superintendent. We want to thank you for enriching our schools with better professional learning communities. We want to thank you for improving our community relationships and our staff relationships, and having people give you faith to do things like our teacher evaluation program, which is unheard of in most districts in California. We want to commend you on your integrity, and your love for children, and your going into classrooms and respecting teachers and students. And for all of these things, we have, we do have something for the rest of the evening. Your special hat. And you think when I go to a convention, I bring nothing back?
Which way is it?
Because he also, he also represents all the arts, and thank you for being a good school. Don't you mind the picture?
No, it's all right, that's all right. That's why it was on and off.
But Jenny got a quick picture for Facebook, everyone goes to her Facebook.
Can I ask, they're not going to talk about Dr. Huggins, it'll make me cry, so I'm not going to do that yet. I did want to thank, uh, Pete Barron, and I did want to tell people that the Fullerton Council PTA this year, uh, recognized Pete for all of his efforts in science and chess and everything else that he has done for our students for so many years. He tries to get away, and he tries not to show up at things, because he doesn't want the public recognition, so, um, I just want everyone to give him one more thank you for all that he does for all of our kids here in Fullerton.
For all the years. I'd like to know if there's anyone here from PTA that's going to be speaking this evening? How about from FETA? From CSCE? Come on up. Thank you, we're glad to hear from you.
Good evening. Uh, my name's Nadine, I'm the CPR officer with CSCE. Um, we're continuing negotiations, we met last week, and we'll be meeting again tomorrow, um, all day, or Thursday, I'm sorry, I have a day off. And, um, the only other item that we have to report is we had a few in-house promotions in nutrition services, so we were very glad to see that some classified members were cleared of the class. That's it. Hope they're having a good summer.
And you too. We heard July, if you like the Giants. And August.
She'll be good.
Good evening, all you distinguished members of our cabinet and our board. We are really going to miss you, Dr. Huggins. We have really enjoyed having you as a superintendent, and we are going to carry on all the legacy things that you have given us. And we are very busy right now, all putting our staffs together, getting our people in place to, um, adjust our numbers in our classrooms, and we are still working, I can tell you, there's many of us still working. So, um, enjoy and keep in touch.
Thank you. Again, that's heartfelt. For those of you who, um, want to check right now, our, uh, calendar is up for the next month, and I do want to tell people that we will be having a, um, special meeting, the three foundations, to try to set their events this year not to be in conflict with one another, and we will be giving those to Carmen to post. We hope that as schools plan their events with PTAs and, um, other organizations, foundations, that they all check our district calendar to avoid conflicts as best they can with one another, and with this board, and with our foundations. Thank you. Um, next, I would... I'm missing my superintendent. Oh, I've changed it. We have some people sitting here, oh my goodness. Lynn, I'm moving it forward. Lynn, do you have any comments?
Oh, um, no, it's been just a week since we last met, um, but it is going to seem odd to have that chair filled with a new person, and, um, it has been an extreme pleasure to work with you, and thank you for what you have done to improve the education in the best district in the world.
Absolutely.
We're glad you joined us, and we are sorry to see you go, but we do wish you well. Bring us some fantastic teachers as you train the, the next round of leadership for our schools. We wish you well.
Thank you. I too would like to, uh, thank you for all that you've taught me, and even though we've never disagreed about anything, I, uh, you are one of the most graceful, kind, high-character men I've ever met in my life, and, um, you know, I wish we could have spent some years together on this board when we had more monies and there were less issues to deal with, but, uh, you're a, you're a really, really nice, good man, and a, and a smart man, a great educator, and, uh, it was a pleasure to work with you, and apologies for any times I got out of line with you, which happened more than once, but, but I, I look up to you and, and very much like you, and hope we get to, to communicate in the future. Thank you.
I'd like to thank Schools First in the District for that summer barbecue, it was really fun. We had a great time seeing everybody, a lot of principals, all the management, all the staff, everybody, and Dr. Plenka was interacting with everybody, and that was kind of fun to see, um, for everybody to have that time with him. Um, I'd like to say that Beth and I got to train, uh, got to attend the all-day training from the Apple. Phil was there, and, um, Lynn was there, and Bob was there, and it was really exciting to hear all the new things that are happening with the, uh, Apple. That was a great day, and I would like to, I know Carla's not here, but I do appreciate the time that she put in to write a letter to the editor at the, on The Observer in regard to the four Cs, and appreciate the time that she put in, thank you for putting it in the paper. Yes. And, uh, I want to thank all, uh, my fellow board members, because it's been a really long month. We've had meetings till eleven-thirty at night, we've, we've worked together, and it, it was really rewarding. It has been, and it still is. We still go at it. And, uh, I'm going to say goodbye to Mitch. When Mitch came on board five years ago, he was my boss, and, uh, for three years, um, he would come into my classroom, and I'd be all nervous, going, oh, what is he looking at, is everything going to be okay? And then I kind of flipped the switch on him, so now, I would come to the meetings, I don't think he was nervous when I came in, whatever. It's really been nice. I've enjoyed working with you with both hats on, and I wish you the very best. I know that you're going to go down a great path and have more, more to look forward to, and new challenges, and good luck, and goodbye.
Thank you.
Is that really?
No, I'm not, I'm not a good... I think Jenny did talk about a couple of things I was going to talk about. Even though school is out, we're still working, um, I wanted to say thank you to all of our principals, thank you to our teachers.
Carmen has put in so much extra time as we've worked for a new superintendent, and we really appreciate all that you're doing and the patience you have with each of us. When we ask questions, that seems so important to us, but probably foolish sometimes to you. And thank you for trying to educate us. Speaking of education, I want to share with my board a keynote that I heard this morning, and you might find this a bit provocative also, but today, this morning, our keynote speaker was a recent immigrant eight or ten years ago from China from a very small town. He's very successful, and he is a data person. So, with that being said, he spoke a lot about how bad we do on the PISA test, that's that map, and the Tims test. Those are math tests that countries of the world and related part of all rated on. And he mentioned how when we first took the PISA, twelve nations took it, and we were the worst, and we couldn't get more worse. Those are his words. And therefore, as time has gone on, whatever place we place now, if there's anybody below us, we've improved. And so, America talks about needing to do better jobs at educating our students. And he put up a chart up, and he showed how we fared in testing. And then he talked about how well we do in the world. And he happened to be Asian, and he said, you know, we talk about, why is the United States still here? I mean, we do terrible in math, we do terrible in science, and yet your economy is one of the best in the world, and your contributions in terms of patent and world development is higher than any other country in the world. How can this be when you do such a bad job for fifty years of educating children? And so, you can see, his emphasis moved from the tests to what makes successful people. And part of what he talked about was loving teachers. And he talked about Asia in general, and China specifically, and said, when a child in China comes in the first grade and you say, what is two and one, and they say, five, you say, no, and oh my God, have your parents failed you already. In the United States, when a child says five, the teacher says, that's an interesting answer. Could you please explain that a little more? And it is the allowance of... He believes it is the allowance of that love and the ability for creativity and student confidence. He took this further. After taking national tests a few years ago, there was a question asked of the students around the world as to, how do you think you are in math? How do you rate yourself? And in Japan, which is one of the highest-ranking countries on the test, they said, well, I'm a little concerned that I'm not good enough. In the United States, where the students weren't doing that well on the test, they said, I'm good in math. And what this gentleman was trying to say was, confidence is an underpinning of success, and along with that goes creativity. So why does our country continue? Confidence, creativity. Then he had a long dialogue about Lady Gaga, and he talked about, how would you teach someone to be a successful entrepreneur, talented, and creative as Lady Gaga? Now, when you talk about people all over the world, they may not know the person who invented the newest pill, but everyone knows Lady Gaga. And that went back to our country fostering that development of creativity and talent and exploration in schools, and how in many places, those things are killed in order to conform and do well on tests. It was a very provocative presentation, and it really left a message with us that to create successful and entrepreneurial people, we are doing some wonderful things in our country. China is looking critically at its own educational system and saying, our children are succeeding very high on international tests, but we're not faring well with... I want to... The thing was, they have a huge population that produces very little patents. In this country, five percent of the population is Asian, and fifteen percent of those people, fifteen percent of Ivy League enrollment is Asian. Quite disproportionate. But only about two percent of those Ivy League graduates or very successful students land up with high-level positions in Fortune 500 companies. Is this racism? Or is it that these students are still carrying a culture that lacks anything other than test-taking skills, and that's not going to get you to the top of American companies that are very successful? So, a lot more was said, but the bottom line is, as we look at our children being more academically successful and try to take on some of the academic methods of Asian countries, we should try to think, is that to better our country or to lose certain aspects of the success that has made this country survive two hundred years plus? Something you might think about in the future. Very provocative. Next, one other thing I have to share with you is the idea of badging. Badging is... We use it in our school district and in the state. When a school is a California distinguished school or a blue-ribbon school, immediately we see on their stationery an emblem that represents that. Well, part of the California Technology Task Force has been talking about badging teachers. If you're a national... Well, if you've passed a national certification, if you are a legal, and many other stuff, many other things. So, with that in mind, they're talking about badging of staff, and it is the one thing from the task force that the state of California has already decided to move on. So, we might be seeing this within our own district, and one of the things they like to badge people on is technology skills. And so, the conference did a lot of talking about what would the skills be, and I do have information of how staff can get free certification to become a certified badge technology guru or whatever teacher. So, those are two of the concepts I've brought back from the conference the last few days. That being said, Dr. Huggins, it's your turn.
I have nothing more to say other than thank you. I think I've said it all the last month, month and a half, but you know, thank you. It's been a wonderful experience. My pleasure to work with each of you, and my pleasure to be a part of the experience.
And we've had to grow, didn't we? Okay. I have a consent calendar, and I'm looking for a motion. By the way, parents, this is when usually everybody leaves this room. If you'd like to stay, we'd love to have you. If you want to leave us, we don't take offense. Maybe I shouldn't have said that.
It's okay. Bye, you guys. Thank you.
Have a nice evening, and good luck to you, for your daughter. I'd like to hear a motion. If anybody has any items on the consent calendar that they would like to have pulled, and could you please put out the gifts for us?
Do you want the motion first or the polls first?
Why don't we pull it so that we know how to create the motion?
I'd like to pull one J.
One J. Anyone have anything else? May I?
Oh, I'd like to discuss, but not poll or poll, but I'm trying to support it. One L.
Okay. So, one L we'll discuss, one J we'll pull. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar without one L? One J, excuse me.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Would you like to talk about one L?
Yeah, but I got to find my notes.
It's the coolest, you know?
You know, actually, you know, I don't want... I have nothing to discuss on one L. In fact, in fact, some discussion in closed session made that less of a concern to me today, tonight, so I don't need to talk about one L.
Okay.
So, one J.
Does anyone want to move to...
We moved into...
One L is finalized.
I'd second all but J.
I need a vote on our consent calendar minus J.
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That's a five-o. Now, the other issue you have is to approve organizational memberships for next year.
I brought this up last year.
I'm going to call.
One thing, you know, I think it was less than ideal. It wasn't difficult to do, but no one totaled it. We're talking about forty-nine thousand, two-hundred-and-twelve dollars, I believe, of organization... Of organizational memberships. And I want to thank Kathy Ikola for so rapidly and thoroughly answering the question, which actually sort of gave you some context for what I want to say. But I began to ask her about the first two items because I assumed, since they were public relations related, that she was familiar, and she was. And she said to me that the first one, California School Public Relations Association, was of most significant value to her because of the contact list and updated contact information of other California public relations, because people in her position. And I believe it's from there that you said you get those notifications.
I'm sorry, could you have...
Is that where you get the notifications of issues?
To the...
Yeah. And so, it was California... The California one was significantly more important to her than the national one, and she wasn't sure, nor did she have any obligation to be sure, as to whether or not she needed to be a member of the national to be a member of the California. She did a little bit of quick research, and she discovered that she does not need to be a member of the national, and I don't think she has any... Feels there's much of a loss to not be a member.
The only thing would be that in attending the conference, it would be more expensive not being a member.
But you haven't attended it.
I never got to the ones out of state.
Right. So, my bigger issue is...
What would you say about San Diego?
Next year's conference is going to be here locally for the National School of Public Relations Association. Previous ones have been in Washington, New York, Chicago, which is pretty conservative.
Do we know if the reduction is more than two-hundred-and-seventy-five... Is two-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars a month?
You know, and I'm not even recommending that... And I would agree, if that's an important event for her to attend, it may be cheaper to pay this than it is to not. But my point is, I am highly skeptical that every single one of these organizations is something that we derive significant benefit from. I am equally as certain that some of them we do, and I don't know which are which, but fifty thousand dollars is a significant amount of money. And I think that we should at least, as a board, have some person who deals with that organization at least write a one-sentence justification for the expense.
Would you like us to go down and make a comment right now?
If you feel like at the table we're prepared to do that.
Well, we can put something together to send it out to you.
So, we can continue it.
Yeah, because I know when we went through these, we have cut this down significantly the last couple of years, and we have... We ask each division to sort of look at them and only pick those things that are most critical to their jobs and the ones that they use and rely on. So, if you would like, we'd be happy to put something together and just give it out.
Can we table this until our July twenty-third meeting?
Some of these...
Do we need this done now?
Some of them become due July...
We do some purchase orders and memberships starting in July.
In the interest of discussing this further next year, what I would move is giving staff discretion to pay for the ones which they need to pay for before the next meeting and bring back justification on the ones that they do not. You know, I would... You know, I don't want to die on this hill. And I know that most of the money, you know, is the ASOP and CSBA, and even though I wish we quit CSBA and we have that conversation.
Just to make you feel a little bit warmer, the ASOP one actually is a contract we have for the system. It's not a membership.
Right.
But because I was in negotiations and not in cabinet, it wasn't pulled. So, that one actually is a contract. It isn't a membership.
Well, I knew it was an important system.
It's part of our system.
Yeah, right, right. I understand. So, yeah, I mean, I would move that we modify this item to direct staff to pay for those that must be paid for prior to the next meeting and bring back a short justification for the remainder. If that's a legitimate motion, I think it is.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Thank you.
You can pay for the ones you have to pay for. The ones that aren't due, bring back a short justification.
To the board, maybe?
Wait, you want to just... You want to hear about all of them, though, not just the...
Oh, yeah, I want to hear about all of them. Go ahead and pay for the ones that you have to pay for. That was my intention anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Yeh. Okay. We've now completed our consent calendar, and I'm going to hold the public hearing now. I'm going to declare the public hearing at...
Seven twenty.
Seven twenty to allow for public comments regarding the two thousand twelve, thirteen proposed budget, all funds as required by California Education Code. I think this should go...
For two.
For... No, no, no. It should be after the presentation.
No.
Oh, part of the presentation. I'll take that.
That way people can comment to it.
Okay. Thank you. So, now let's move to the presentation.
Yeah, I asked Susan to do a presentation first, and then that way...
And then we'll come back for the comments.
You can do this part of the public hearing.
Thank you.
That way, that was the concern.
And we are glad you're here with us this evening. Appreciate that.
Okay, now that we've cleared the room, my groupies are still here. Excellent. Okay. Okay, we're going to talk about the budget for next year. Now, I'm the chief business official of the district, so everyone thinks this is my big day, right? Most exciting day of my year, the day I get to present the budget to everyone. I did put my nice suit on today, and I had it in San Diego stuff, the summer. Oh, yeah, your budget's nice. Here it is. I hope I wish I had something new and exciting to tell you, like last week, the legislature passed a budget, and then it gave us all the money, but unfortunately, no. This is kind of anticlimactic. It's a lot of stuff you've heard before, but let's go through it anyways. We'll just keep updating ourselves. Okay, so we did call this the final budget. Our final budget is due June thirtieth to the state. We prepare a budget for all the funds of the district. Each fund, we have estimated actuals for the year, so estimated financial statement for the eleven, twelve school year, and then we have a budget for the twelve, thirteen school year. I did put my nice suit on today and I had it in San Diego stuff, the summer. Oh, yeah, your budget's nice. Here it is. I hope, I wish I had something new and exciting to tell you. Like last week, the legislature passed a budget where they gave us all the money. But unfortunately, no. This is kind of anticlimactic. It's a lot of stuff you've heard before, but let's go through it anyways. We'll just keep updating ourselves. Okay, so we did call this the final budget. Our final budget is due June thirtieth to the state. We prepare a budget for all the funds of the district. Each fund, we have estimated actuals for the year, so estimated financial statement for the eleven, twelve school year. And then we have a budget for the twelve, thirteen school year. And then for the general fund, we also do our three-year, multi-year projections. And as you know, we call this our final budget, but we do revise the budget all year long. So at this point, this is our best estimate of where we think our revenues are going to be next year. And that's based upon the budget that was just passed last week from the state, which we're going to be talking about some more. And then all of our expenditures, where we think we are right now. So it's our best estimate, but we know this is very change and we update it all year long. And you do have a book. In the book, we have a memo that I've written. We have some financial statements, current year and budget year. And then we have all the state forms. It's excruciating, vetoed everything for when you have trouble sleeping at night, you can read through those. But this presentation is really, I'll be just talking about what I have in the memo. I'm really not going to talk a lot about the other funds. There's a pretty status quo. There's information in the memo on those two and certainly can answer questions about anything. So our budget is based upon the made revise. That was the most recent information we had of the state budget when we put our budget together. The legislature did pass last Friday a budget. They wanted to get paid, so they did pass something by June fifteenth. They worked out, they're working out the final details now. Truly not a lot of changes on that. But basically, that budget that they passed, very similar to the made revise, which was really very similar to what the governor first came out in January. And for K-12, basically, they're giving us back that little bit of money that they cut from us. Meteor cuts this year, but basically, it's flat funding across the board based upon the governor's tax initiative passing in fall. So we'll talk a little more about that as we go along. But let's start with the eleven, twelve estimated actuals. Again, this is our best estimate right now of how we think we're going to end the school year. It's going to end this, it's on Friday, June thirtieth. This reflects the current district budget and includes all the budget revisions we've made so far this year. So what we do is go through all of our line items, revenue budgets, revenue limit, look at all of our expenditure accounts, programs, look at our approachment, all the other funds, and truly update that and think, see how we figure we're going to end up the year. Basically, what you're seeing again in the book or the estimated actuals is there's really no big differences from what you saw when we presented to you at the third dinner, and that was just a month ago. The estimated income is actually a little better than what we had looked at in third dinner. A whole lot better, but you know, it's always good to be positive. So the bottom line, general fund, we have a total estimated net income. Excess of revenues over expenditures, two-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand. And that's made up of unrestricted fund net income, one million, two-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand. And then against a net deficit in the restricted fund, which is just a spending down of prior year categorical funds, nine-hundred-and-sixty thousand. So you add those two together and you get your total there. So that turns out to a total general fund and a balance of eighteen million, six-hundred-and-sixteen thousand, which is made up of restricted reserve designated of five million, and then my number's wrapped around there, sorry. Unrestricted at thirteen million, three-hundred-and-fourteen thousand. You can see better on that page. So given unrestricted fund balance, and that's really the fifth year in a row we have increased in our unrestricted fund. So we're ending up at thirteen million, four-thousand. That's twelve-point-six percent of total expenditures and against state requirements, three percent. So that's good, ending up in a positive for this year. Now, what we'll be doing now, the next six to eight weeks, is posting our books for the year, doing all of our accruals, and just closing books. And so, and we'll come back to you in early September with the estimated actuals for the year. We do expect we'll have final results that are even better than what we showed on the last slide. Because typically, we don't, we budget to spend all categoricals and we know we won't spend all those. And then we also know that we do underspend in most of our expenditure accounts. So we feel we will do better even than what we reported there. So we should have a positive year for this year.
So you think the positive year will be around three-hundred thousand?
Well, right now, we are predicting net income, total net income in general fund, two-sixty-eight. And then the unrestricted fund, you can see, one-point-two-two million. So, I don't see, Stephen and I usually bet on how much-
Do you have a lottery?
How much, we bet on how much better it's going to be, so I don't know. We go five-hundred thousand, a million dollars better. We'll go five-hundred thousand better.
You guys bet on that?
Yeah, usually we have a little bet going, yeah.
You usually bet, so it would be about two million dollars.
I don't probably go into unrestricted like two minutes. Two, two minutes. No, it's always something counting. You don't, you don't guess around games, so. All right, we'll talk about the twelve, thirteen budget now. Let's move on to that. Let's talk a little more about the state budget. Again, you all are payers and watching you, so now that the legislature has passed a budget, then again, that budget is pretty much the same for K-12 education as what the governor originally came out with in January and what the made revision was, which we, which we really built our budget on. Again, eleven, twelve, you know that we had major trigger reductions this year. Thirteen dollars on the revenue limit and thirty-nine dollars per student on the, for transportation. That money's restored for twelve, thirteen, so you'll see a little bump up in the revenue limit. But basically, all of that funding is flat. And the budget is based upon the governor's fall tax initiative passing. So we'll look at this slide again. I think I used this slide three or four times now in the presentations. Again, this is the governor's and the legislature's budget is based upon this fall tax initiative, which has qualified to go on the ballot, along with the other one-monthly initiatives. So both will be on the ballot. The governor's budget is all based upon it. It passing, it increases the sales tax and the income tax. And if passed, district's flat funding. If it does not pass, the state's going to impose some mandatory meteor trigger cuts on K-12 education. They told us just today, see before we were working on a number, actually, a couple of months ago, we were on a three-three-seven number. And it bumped up to four-forty-one. Now they're up to four-hundred-and-fifty-seven. So when we did our budget, we were still working at the four-forty-one. So you'll see, we had prepared two budgets. So when we did our alternative budget, we used this five-point-nine cut. So the four-fifty-seven, obviously, that's about two-hundred thousand dollars. Yeah. So that is the projection if, if the governor's tax initiative does not pass. So here's the only cartoon I have. Governor, they say here they're in Sacramento, open the Capitol, Governor Brandon, you saw on line three, they've spotted California's budget deficit. Okay.
Very easy, Pam.
Pieces of Gary, you know.
Okay, just a couple of slides on the actual state budget from SSC. This just shows you the projected estimated actuals for the state for eleven, twelve. They are looking actually for this, this year, it's just about to end June thirtieth. Basically, almost net, you know, bottom line, no change. But since they're starting with a negative fund balance, they're ending with a negative fund balance also. For twelve, thirteen budget, they are showing an increase in revenue. But again, that's money from the tax initiative and also showing an increase in expenditures too. But they are at least projecting, if everything comes out right, that they would have a positive fund balance at the end of the year. I thought this was an interesting slide from the, one of the slides from the budget presentation from School Services, just to show, they do an analysis all the time. Oh, seven oh eight was the last year we were fully funded at the COLA level. So they, they keep updating this chart to show, here's all the major parts of the budget. And then for twelve, thirteen, and you can see, of the eighty-five billion on a budget, you know, education, especially when you add in higher education, you know, we're more than half the state budget. That's why they always go to us for the cuts. But you can also see how much less the state is paying, is spending on education now than they were in oh seven or eight. So it's kind of comparison. You can see all the different categories there. And so again, we are making right now ten percent on our revenue, but a ten percent less per student than we did in oh seven or eight. So, yeah, that's-
It was like twenty percent, nineteen?
Well, the total, so this number here, these numbers is like everything. It's revenue limit, categoricals, daycare, preschool, transportation. Everything is in there, so, yeah, so it is twenty percent less overall.
I mean, that's the real number. The others, no.
Exactly. You're right. Okay, so let's go on to our school district budget. Total revenues that we're projecting for twelve, thirteen for the general fund, ninety-eight million dollars, just under one-hundred million dollars. That's a five-point-four million dollar decrease from the estimated actuals from two thousand eleven, twelve. And if you look at those financial statements we gave you and kind of go line to line, you'll see the biggest decrease is in the federal income as the biggest decrease of revenues. Again, revenue limit itself is pretty much just flat. There's not a big change in state and other local. These changes in federal income. And most of that is due because, you know, we're done spending our federal jobs, act allocation. We used up our A, our R.A. money. We have a little bit left in I P E A. We've spent all that this year, or out of our L E A program improvement. And then just ongoing programs such as Title I, II, Title III, even those were projected right now to receive plus money. So that's the biggest decrease in the revenues. This chart just kind of shows you a breakdown of how we see our revenues in the general fund. Again, the biggest part, almost seventy percent, is revenue limit. This is the daily money we get every day when the child actually comes to school in the seat. Next biggest category is the state, which is all the other categoricals, lottery, house size reduction. We have some federal revenues and then other local, whoops. The biggest part of that other local, like about six million dollars of that is the money we actually get from the SELPA, comes from the state through the SELPA to run our special education program. The rest of that is interest and donations, a large part of that. On the state funding, the major factors there are the COLA. We have three-point-two-four percent COLA, but that's offset by an increase to the deficit factor of twenty-two-point-two-seven-two percent. So a net result of flat funding, zero COLA and state programs. Now, we have not built any mandated cost income into our budget, just to be very, very conservative. Now, what has come out in this budget that the governor's about to sign supposedly is we will be receiving dollars for mandated costs. We have a choice. You can do a flat funding, which would be about three-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand dollars for us. Or you can continue to fill out all the paperwork and do all the claims and hope you're going to get that money down the road. So that's a decision we'll have to make. I think we're going to go for the bird of the hand rather than maybe out there in the future we'll get it. But we do need to look into that more and get all the details on it.
What percentage are they not giving us equal to that?
Well, I think before, the district was getting somewhere between like three-quarters of a million and a million dollars a year. So, and this again, next year will be about three-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand dollars for us, so.
So it loses two-thirds of the funds.
Yeah.
Wow.
But they have not paid us on our mandated cost and salaries, but you're right, yeah. They're taking money. It's another cut. So, but we'll need to look into more, more into all that and get all the details on that before we make a decision what we're going to do. But just know now that in the budget, you see, there's some, there's some netting.
Netting.
So when we get it, that will be a adjustment, a plus adjustment. So again, this, this, this chart's just a summary on all the revenue information. And this is all in there, but to, with the COLA, the deficit factor, a little restoration of eleven, twelve runtime cuts. So we are looking for at a per ADA allocation, just over five thousand dollars per student. We're using an ADA change of zero. That's flat enrollment. The potential trigger cut, again, what, what we were using before was the four-forty-one. Now we know it's higher and at that point it was five-point-nine-nine. Put this slide in here just to show you again, this is a School Services slide. Just the historical trend of the deficit factor that the state has imposed on school districts. Remember back in these days, we used to say, this is awful, eleven percent, and now we're up to twenty-two-point-two-seven-two percent. Which, another way of looking at that is your reporter says, yeah, your salary's a hundred thousand dollars a year, but actually, we're only paying seven-eight thousand. Oh, and actually, we're going to, because of cash flow problems, defer half of that till the year afterward, the next year. So it's, this is pretty crazy and only getting worse. And you can also see too, you know, back here, it took a while. Once it peaked, it was zero back here. It peaked and then it took them a while to work their way back. And this is when it come, it was very good to work their way back down to here. Now we're all the way up here. So again, it's going to take a while for them to get that back down. And there is, again, if, if the initiative, tax initiative passes, you know, they're hoping at least for the cash deferral part to be reduced for next year. That is part of it. So we'll just wait to see how that works out. This is a chart. Everyone's seen this before, but again, this is from School Services. They do this for us. Just to show you the difference between the per student funding. Again, this was the last time we got paid at our, at our COLA. Oh, seven oh eight was the high, or last time, the last time we had the high for our revenue limit, five-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars per student. If we had got our statutory COLA each year, we'd be up this year to six-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty-eight. Instead, what we've been funded is the spring, fine year. And then if the trigger's pulled, the initiative does not pass, then we'll be up to this number here of the forty-five, sixty-three. So even you're in between this and this, that's, that again, is that ten percent cut we're getting less.
That's thirty-three percent.
Oh, so the revenue limit?
Thirty-three percent cut in one of the twelve.
Now, this, this chart here, the Arch High Department of Education gives us lots of, also prepares us lots of, lots of lovely charts. This one, they're showing cumulative each year how much less money we've received over time since oh seven oh eight because of the cuts, again, just to the revenue limit. They're, they're saying, don't forget, this doesn't include the twenty percent cut we've taken in categorical programs. Just revenue limit. If the tax initiative passes, we've still lost through twelve, thirteen, over thirty-five million dollars. If the tax initiative fails, forty-one million dollars. Again, that's, that's cumulative over all these years. Still a lot of money. And this is our chart. We do it just for one year. So the estimated budgeted total revenue limit for the twelve, thirteen school year, sixty-seven-point-seven million. If we were receiving our statutory COLA, eighty-six-point-three million. So the difference there is eighteen-point-six million. So if you think of how much, what we could do as an extra eighteen-point-six million dollars, I think we could all come up with some good reasons for that. And that's kind of the depressing slides. Let's, let's move on. Do you want to mention two or three categoricals? You know, there are, there are programs that formally, the revenue was restricted. How we can spend it, the state gave us flexibility and said, hey, you can spend this however you want. So we have had our two meetings ago, we had the pub hearing. Last meeting, we passed our resolution on it. And then in the book, again, we do have the detail of all of those programs and what's being swept and how we're spending the money.
So would you like to add one more?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, regarding expenditures. For the twelve, thirteen school year, we are looking at a total expenditures, one-hundred-and-two million. That is a three-million-dollar decrease over two thousand eleven, twelve. And again, if you look at the comparison between the current and prior years for the budgeted year and estimated actuals, you'll see the majority of those changes are in the salaries and the benefits line. So what we basically have is increased expenses to salaries and benefits because of second column and healthcare cost increases. And those are offset by decreases in expenses because of our negotiated agreements that we are in the middle of settling and finalizing with our, with our union going out for increasing class size and curlicles. with our, with our union going out for increasing class size and furlough base. So, and again, those, that's all in the book too, you can see the detailed numbers on that. So we have included those negotiated items in our budget. This chart shows the total expenditures broken down by object. Obviously, the school district, almost ninety percent of our expenditures are for salary benefits. It's very simple for elementary school district, really, that's, that's where all of our expenses are, we are people business. Also presented this a little differently, showing you the difference between the estimated actuals for two thousand twelve and the budget two thousand thirteen, just to see the overall decrease in total expenditures, and then also in each category is decreasing. Okay, so putting that all together, if you were very closely watching, you saw that the expenditures for this year are higher in revenues, so that means we have a net decrease in fund balance, which is two point eight million dollars, that's the projected total general fund net decrease. It's made up of deficit spending and unrestricted fund, two point seven million, and just unrestricted fund, just a hundred and fifteen thousand.
I have a question on that one. That includes deferral or not? Is there a money that's on your schedule?
So this is the end of just our actual revenue and expenditure, so it doesn't take into account cash deferrals because we're on an accrual basis, so even though the state doesn't pay us the money, we still look it as revenue. So yeah, if we were on a cash basis, because they don't pay us all the money upfront, we would look a lot worse.
And what percentage of this negative number is due to what we owe in interest?
Due to what?
What we owe in interest with the money we borrow because we've been deferred.
Well, right now, we don't have a trans right now, we have enough cash balance to keep us going.
From the original.
Yeah, we, we still have, because we still have fund balance.
Good, thank you.
This, we have a chart form showing the change in fund balance. So again, two thousand eleven, we were positive, we had net income. Two thousand twelve estimated actuals, we also have projected net income. We have a projected spending down to the restricted fund, but that's offset by the unrestricted fund, we have net projected net income, so the total is, is above the zero line, we have projected net income. And two thousand thirteen, for the first time in a very long time, we are deficit spending, that's why that line is below the purple, where we do not want it to be.
So move it.
We're trying, that's, that's going to be our challenge for the next year. This is the unrestricted and a fund balance percent. Again, in two thousand eleven, we finished the year, we were at eleven point four percent. Two thousand twelve, like we just talked about, the estimated actuals, twelve point six percent, we feel probably a little higher than that, because we are spending down reserves, deficit spending, and two thousand thirteen, in the budget year, we are going down. Still well above the three percent, but we are spending down, and we need to turn that trend around.
So on the restricted funds, we're really spending more than we're getting those?
It's not really a spending more than we get with those, with the restricted funds, when we're showing deficit spending, it's more that we get money in one year and we don't spend it until the next year. So it's like getting money, putting it in your pity bank, so in this one, first year you're showing a positive inflow, but then the next year when you spend it, you're spending more than you've actually taken in, but you're spending it out of your bank account.
So that number is going to be spending down our reserves?
It's not, not our unrestricted reserves, no, it has nothing to do with our three percent.
No, yeah, I, no, I meant the restricted dollars that are over, will be taken this year, that we spend. Are those dollars coming from our unrestricted reserve?
No.
That's the question.
Yeah, you, you are correct, you said that correctly.
Thank you.
Okay, so for the three-year projection, the governor's budget, we do have to do a three-year projection, like we do at our first and second interim, our third and our two, but we do not do a positive, qualified, or negative certification at budget time. We just present the three-year projection. So when you go in the book and way in the back of the state form sheet, you will see that generally detailed three-year projection. And we do use the parameters that the county office gives us, and they, that's lots of what they're looking at and checking. So our projected unrestricted fund balances for the budget year twelve thirteen, a ten point eight percent that we just talked about on the previous slide, and then because we're projecting to deficit spend down, six point nine for thirteen, fourteen, and then just at the three percent for fourteen, fifteen. So theoretically, if we were having to certify at this time, we could say positive because we are three percent in the three-year out, though you might want to say, perhaps it's qualified because we are deficit spending, but like I said, we're not, we're not certifying right now.
But we solve, this is all contingent.
All contingent, exactly. Which is what we're saying on this chart, that is all, I would say that there. That's all contingent on, that's all governor's budget, tax, all tax initiatives, absolutely right. Cannot say that enough. Now, if this does not pass, this is our alternate budget that we prepare, our projection that we looked at, we have the, at this, when we did this, the five point nine million probably were like six million dollars less ongoing, your active year revenue, and that means next year, we'd be at a five percent, but then we'd be below the three percent the next two years out. So obviously, something has to happen here because we can't just continue to, to deficit spend down.
Why is that, why is that class?
It seems like the two, the, the two should be switched. No, we get less money.
We get less money.
Yeah, so we're getting, we're getting, so on this one here, we're deficit spending down, right? So on this one here, basically what happens is you're, you have five point nine million dollars less in income each of the next three years, so you're actually going, you're actually going into a negative by balance, that's why you're seeing.
Your deficit is negative.
Negative numbers. Let me show you this, maybe this will help you.
Is your pointer supposedly working?
Pardon?
Is your pointer working?
I don't point all the time.
Oh, you were taking this, there you go.
Yeah, I take it on and off, okay. So this blue line here is the budget.
You have fairly low level of ability to follow.
Okay, so this is the budget with the governor's.
The red dot, right?
Tax initiative, yeah. Very slowly down the line, the governor's tax initiative passing. The green line here in the middle is the three, three percent that we are at the three percent reserve. So if the governor's tax initiative passes, and all of our other assumptions are correct, and we're moving right along, we will, even though our fund balance is decreasing, we're still right at the three percent at June three of two thousand fifteen. However, if the governor's tax initiative does not pass in our alternative budget, we are showing five point nine million dollars less each year, and it's cumulative, so the first year it's five point nine, the second year it's eleven million, and I hear it's like seventeen million. That's why it's so hard, you can see that, yeah, it's like seventeen million less. So obviously, something has to happen here, we can't go damages. And even this, we did show this chart last week to our management group, and even this, this has got to change, and we all realize that, and this has got to, it has to. I can't resist that. What's next?
Prayer.
Prayer? We're going to get the final details on the state budget. Then we, as I said, we'll be closing our books to get the, on our estimated actuals and determine our variables. We will start school and count enrollment, continue with the further budget refinement, and of course, see what happens in the fall election. And I'm happy to answer any questions. I will, I will say also that Carleen Chandler is here from the county, you all know her, she goes through all of our numbers, looks at everything we've done. I just want to thank our fiscal leadership team, Steve Miller is your wonderful fiscal director at the state, he's a great job, he puts this all together, along with Becky Silver and Rachel Grantham, and they put all these numbers together, we have thousands of accounts and programs and funds and made it together, we do this, it's a great thing. Mr. Thompson?
The two point, whatever it is, eight million deficit that, that accrues the.
That one either.
Yeah, that accrues the, what's the term we use, the withheld funds, the, the funds.
Restrictive.
No, not restricted.
The fund.
The money is that we're owed, but they're not giving us.
The defer.
The defer, the deferrals that the state is paying us.
So that, that is net, assuming we actually, it's because we're owed the deferrals. So that's, that's assuming that we get the deferrals, that's what it will look like on a cash flow basis, once we receive the deferrals.
Yes, all these, all of these statements, all of the budget, and then when we do our actual income statements, those are all based on accrual basis of accounting, it's not a cash basis of counting. So at the end of the year, we recalculate revenue limit based upon, this is the dollars per ADA, times our ADA, less the property taxes we've received, and this is what we are under, we are under a deficit right now, someday they have to be started.
No, I'm not confusing them.
You're, you're just talking about the cash.
I'm just, you know, you know, one, one consideration here is we, as we weigh how conservative to be, as we consider passing the budget in which we are planning on spending reserves, is, you know, what is the likelihood that we're actually going to ever receive these deferrals?
I feel very strong that we will always receive our deferrals, we have always received them up till now. There's, there's really no reason to believe that they won't eventually settle up with us.
Other than the fact that the rate of indebtedness.
I would say we have to settle up on defer, on what they defer to six months a year, because if they don't, every school district in California will go bankrupt, and they can't get.
Well, if they don't have the money, they don't have the money. Anyway, the bottom, the bottom line is that there, as you said, the situation is very bad and getting worse, and I think it's very notable.
Yes.
That, that essentially, much like the state's budgeting, and I understand you have to do it this way, assumes, you know, money that's not even dead-banked certain.
Well, I, I feel very certain of that because it's like Hilton says, they, that, that is like the legal thing. They, they said, we are, we are going to pay you district five thousand dollars per student for this year. So we, we look the receivable, you know, our auditors come out and they audit that, and they, they have expressed an opinion on a financial statement that we will receive them. So I feel very strongly about.
Well, it wouldn't be the first time that the state has reneged on a promise.
Well, not, but not on this one, not.
Well.
But the deferrals, as I understand it, the deferrals come throughout the year, in other words, instead of getting the monies in July, they don't wait until the next year to give us the monies, the deferrals come in two or three months. So we're receiving those dollars, but we're receiving them two or three or four months later.
Can you, but go, can you go back to the line graph where it shows the differential between the, the revenue limited and then what we're actually receiving after the first?
The revenue.
Oh, that's not a deferral, that would have been if the funding had stayed at Prop ninety-eight level.
Oh, you're just, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, so that's.
That's not a deferral.
That's not the deferral.
That would have been if we had stayed at Prop ninety-eight.
I got you, all right.
If we had stayed steady.
Okay, so the dollars are not as.
No, eventually, that's what they say, all that money's going to come back.
Come back, yeah, but that's not, so you weren't budgeting based on that.
No, no, no.
We know what you're doing.
Oh my gosh, no.
Right.
Steve won't let me do that, beautiful. We're budgeting, Carleen.
You're budgeting on the, on the green line, yeah.
But we're wondering if we should be budgeting on the white.
Forty-five.
Okay.
And the dream.
Well, we are going to do an alternate budget on the red, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so yeah, that, that, that's a really good point. So we, we built our budget on the five with the green lines, but when we showed you the line that's going downhill, that's the four five sixty-three, which we need to be aware of, and, you know, and, and then obviously, it's such a large part of our budget is salaries, that's why we have a re opener with the units to come back and talk to us.
Now, there's a, there's a question you can clarify for me.
Yes.
Which was really disturbing when I went to look at this, because you're showing spending down general fund, is that because that's an item that you can tell them, rather than something that isn't, you know, hardcore, this is hardcore, this, if, if this is truly what you were planning to do, I, I'm astounded that you would take all the work that we've done in the last five years, building that revenue up, and then you're just going to boom, go down like that.
Well.
You had a graph that was really nice that you gave us, and an outstanding presentation.
Oh, okay, so you're saying, Rich, I didn't, I don't have that graph.
You don't have that graph, but it starts in two thousand seven.
Yeah, so up until, yeah, up until this point, if, if I, if the graph was out here, you would see that the fund balance was going up, 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 up. So now, you're right, and now we're at a point, because back here we were going up because we had furlough days, we got federal jobs money, we got federal ARR money, we made other cuts. Now we're to the point, and even into eleven, twelve, we are still, we still, we're starting that income in eleven, twelve. Twelve thirteen is the first year we are projecting for that. You know, basically, we're spending some of our rainy day funds, we got up to the, probably going to be, up to be about thirteen percent, but you're right, we can't, this can't continue. So we have this in our three-year projection now, all things being equal, but we are going to have to turn this around because we can't do that, and I would say.
The line concern is we turning it around and going to the general fund? We've got other things we can turn it around to, and I, I mean, we, we spent two point five of our general fund this year.
So in eleven, twelve, we're actually, we have net income, we're not spending down eleven, twelve. Twelve thirteen would be the first year of projected to spend down, right?
And that breaks us down to ten, and, and it's my philosophy that three percent is what you have to legally keep, right, okay? That, that was put in place maybe a decade ago or more, I don't know, you would know that, but times are different, I, I think three percent, a rainy day would take care of, but hurricane it wouldn't.
I, I totally agree.
We all agree to that.
Yeah, we all agree with that, the three percent.
Could you say that again?
The three percent is not sufficient, I don't, and, and no one agreed, everyone agreed to that.
But that's what concerned me, because when I saw your paperwork, it's like, oh, this is what we're going to do, boom, 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 it goes all the way to.
Well, this is what we've been, this is what we've been showing in all, all projections, knowing that, and I think this year was kind of nebulous until we got our negotiated agreements worked out. Now we know, this is where we are now, I think the budget that you're seeing now, with the, with that deficit spending, and it is spending down, that's where we are now. Now we know we've got to start working on and getting it back up, because I, I, I don't think anyone is in this room here that we want to keep deficit spending, we know we can't do that. I mean, this doesn't make you feel better, this is very common to see this, all my districts have always been like this, and then, you know, you're like, hey, we got to turn this around, guys, and do something about it, so that's going to be our real job, is our new superintendent.
To me, it's not even the blue line that's the concern, it's the red.
Oh, yeah, the red is that.
Because.
No, that's November.
Yes, but in reality, we need to start preparing seriously, 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 seriously for that, because, I don't know, I'm just so fearful about that red line.
Well, well, you know, and I'm trying very hard to not be sarcastic, but, but, you, you know, you're saying now we have to start preparing.
No, 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 we've been preparing.
Well, we have, but we haven't, in the last year we haven't been, because all the direction we've given has, has led us up to this budget today, which is satisfying these issues with furlough days and, and increased classes.
Things last year, we froze our, we froze second column, we took furlough days.
Well, but that's my point, that's my point, well, we haven't cut salaries and benefits directly, we, we've only, all we've done is hit kids with furlough days, hit kids, hit kids with increased class size, and, and here we are with a deficit and, and a budget in which we haven't even gone to our associations and said we have to cut salaries, we're about to, we're about to, you know, tentative agreements probably, but we're not even doing that, so, you know, we, we asked for this, not to toot my own horn, I didn't, but, but this board asked for this debt. We could have, over the past year and a half, have, have decided to not put this on the backs of children and taxpayers, and, and we could have made the associations, associations understand that this day was coming.
I do have one correction for you, this is not a greater debt to taxpayers, the amount we're getting, we're getting regardless. we're getting, we're getting regardless of the cuts we've already made or the cuts we will make. This is the amount the state is giving us. So our taxpayers are being hit for this regardless of how we're spending the money this year, whether our unions...
Well, no, that's not true, because we're spending down their money that we had in reserves.
But it's the same money we have one way or the other.
Well, yeah, but if you respect, no, that's absolutely untrue. If we had reduced salaries and benefits, salary rates and benefits sufficiently, we would not be, we would not be reducing our fund balance.
But we would still have the same amount of money collected from the taxpayers.
But we would have more money left over of the taxpayers.
Okay, but you were saying that the taxpayers are getting a larger burden. And what I'm saying to you is, we have very little control over their burden.
If the taxpayer owns this, whether you spend the amount at this cost, or whether you just get rid of that, the result to the taxpayer is the same.
That's what I'm saying, that the amount of money that comes into our school district is the same for the taxpayer, but the responsibility of how to spend that money sits at this table.
If we spent less money, we would have spent less of the taxpayer's money. Obviously...
But they still would have paid it. The amount that they have paid to us would have been constant.
But we have, look, we have less left over to deal with future problems.
But that's how we, that's how we use the funds, but the amount that the tax, here's what I would say. The taxpayer does...
Are you not distinguishing between us spending less money and more money?
No, I'm distinguishing between, you're saying the burden upon the taxpayer that we get is different. And what I'm saying to you is, the bottom line dollars that we get is a constant.
What I'm saying is, when you spend down the taxpayer's reserves, you are adding to their burden. You may not be adding to what came out of their pocket this year, but you are, you are spending down an asset that they own. It's six half dozen the other.
We own that asset, the school district, not you or I.
Well, and you're correct. You're not, the taxpayers don't own this school district?
No, but we got that, we got that fund balance because we did some wise cutting. That's how we got to it to begin with. And that's why our reserves are, they were 12, 12 and a half.
Almost 13.
Yeah. And that's because of some prudent, and I want to see that stick. I mean, that's where I am. But we've done a good job, commendable.
Commendable that you raised it.
Yes.
Because, to you?
Well, to everybody. It's impressive that we built it up to that point.
I think the long, the long short is, we know we need to turn that around, and that's, that's our next, that's our next job. This is the, this is the best estimate of where we are now. With our, with everything we know about revenues, estimate what's coming in from the state, and everything we know about our expenditures now, based upon our negotiated agreements, this is deficit spending for this year. Now, can we take steps now and change, even for this, for our years? Absolutely. Even for this year, yes, we can. There are things we can do, and that's what we need to start working on.
Well, okay, but we're all pretending, we're all pretending like we couldn't and shouldn't have done better this year. You know, or now we need to do something. Now we need to reduce salary rates and we need to reduce benefits, as though anybody on earth was served by us having not done that last year. I'm not trying to beat a dead horse, but let's not pat ourselves on the back about what we've done to now, when we are about to spend down reserves in what we all knew was a worsening economy. We should have taken care of this over the last year.
I would say to you that our budget that was presented to us in the second interim was much more dire than what we're looking at here, and we had to get a, we couldn't give a, we had to give a...
Qualify, certified.
A qualified. This time we don't. We don't like what we're doing, but at least three years out, with these numbers, which I don't necessarily believe, but with these numbers, we've come up to a better place, correct? Your oversight? We're at a better place than we were. For that, it's commendable. We've tried to do a better job, and we continue to try. And as you said, we have got to do more cuts for next year so that this will even look better as we go forward, even though, as Lynn says, right, we're always changing it, and it's a growing, different, changing, evolving thing on a momentary basis.
You never know next January when the governor will present.
Simple question. How many furlough days were required to balance this budget?
In there right now, we have five furlough days.
Five, on the backs of children or on the backs of taxpayers?
On the backs.
I mean, I'm sorry. On the backs of children or on the backs of associations? The five furlough days?
Actually, it's both.
Okay.
It's both. Teachers will be taking home less dollars, right? And children will be having five less days in school.
How about, how about, how about?
No, but three, three less days in school.
You're gonna tell me increase class sizes both too?
Pardon?
You're gonna tell me increase class sizes?
Yes, I am.
Okay, well, let it be known, let it be known that this, you know, some people on this board consider the burden upon teachers to be, the 600 teachers or the 1,500 employees to be equal to the 13,000 students. In this economy where incomes have plummeted and the unemployment rate has skyrocketed, and our staff has taken zero real income rate reduction. In fact, in this budget, is step and column increases. Copper. So they're actually, now, they're contracted, but there's actually, there's actually income increases in this budget as students are enduring furlough days and class size increases. So, boy, I have a real hard time thinking we've done a very good job as a board protecting taxpayers and students. We got more furlough days, higher class size, and no salary rate reductions for staff, and no benefit reductions for staff.
Do we have more furlough days this year?
We have less. We have two.
We have five more. You have five in 1213. We have two in the current year, Dr. Hovey's, right? So, so yeah, that's part of the way, we did start out the year, for the 1112 year, we did start out with a deficit budget. Barry brought you a deficit budget last year. So we have turned that around with the furlough days and other savings to make it net income this year. So...
And the programs, what have we done with our programs?
We've maintained programs.
We maintain programs for students.
We have not eliminated any student programs. We've maintained them. And I would say that the very thing that we're doing is what every district in the state of California is doing.
That's actually not true. There are districts in the state of California who are not spending reserves this year, who are not budgeting to spend reserves this year. There are districts in this state that have reduced salaries and benefits up to 10%.
And part of those is furlough days, I would be willing to...
Part of it, but the real salary decreases.
But I would, again, I would say that every district in the state of California is undergoing the very discussions that we're having, and they are all doing the very things that we are doing. So we're not the only district doing this.
Well, no, we're not the only district doing it, but frankly, the more wise ones are sharing the burden of what's happening in the state with the salary rates and the benefits of their employees, as their unions and the political, their political, the people that they politically supported and put us in this position. So, you know, we're not doing this as wise, as wisely as we could be doing it. Anyway, you know, what's amazing is, we'll pass this budget. I'll vote against it. I don't know who else might vote against it, but I would predict that it's gonna pass. And then, next year, we'll actually start talking about real salary and benefit decreases, as though we get the right thing, waiting, 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 wait, oh, now we've got to start. And so then we'll encounter the pain, but we will have lost 2.8 million dollars unless we do better. We will have lost budgeted 2.8 million dollars while we waited until now we really need to do this.
You know, we've been on this road for a long time, and we've been talking about someday, someday it's coming. We've survived as a district a good five, six years, slowly inching, tweaking the budget, trying to stay as solvent as we can, protecting programs. We've known, we've known that there's big bubbles of potential cuts coming. We really have known that, much to what you don't agree. Five, six years ago, the first time we threw up numbers, 8 million, $12 million we're talking about cutting. Where are we coming from salaries? What can we do to not do that? I mean, this is not new to any of us. We have known, I've assumed it's coming, and I'm just gonna say...
And we've cut.
And so we've protected our district as best we can to try and keep it in a, you know, a stable scenario. And now, yes, that little bit of cushion we've had is gonna start to shrink, and yes, what has to happen is gonna be a little more drastic. But this is not like suddenly we're going, oh, my gosh, Chris, you are so right. We've been talking about it, talking about it. I've known this is coming.
Yeah, I agree. I stipulate it. But wouldn't it have been smarter to have the definition of, okay, now we need to, had been before the significant deficit expenditure?
You know, we were able to keep a stability within the district by changing up, some of the initial things we did was, where are there extra pools of money that we can pull out and then at least keep the programs in place? Let's hold open meetings and talk about what's important to our parents. And we said, okay, the arts are important. If that's important, what are we gonna do to keep our district? And part of why we were so good is that we have people that come here. There's, many districts have had huge cuts because the people are leaving to come to us and their enrollment's dropping. We have at least seen growth, which has provided us revenue. So we've got all kinds of, there's all kinds of little pieces that have gone on to get to this point. It isn't like we're suddenly going, oh!
You know what?
But we're getting there. Yes. Are the realities going to be that there's gonna have to be cuts to salary? I think everyone knows that that's out there, but there's, we're gonna hold on until November because Jerry Brown thinks that he's gonna solve the problems on the backs of the taxpayers.
Well, yeah, but we're in deficit even if he does pass it.
We don't know for sure how big that will be, because guess what? In January, he's gonna realize that the revenues that he had aren't gonna be even as high as what he said, and that's part of, and that's part of, the other number you looked at is what we assumed six, seven years ago would be our income.
Look, I'm not saying, I'm not saying we didn't do anything right. We did a lot right. You did a lot right before I ever, before I ever got here. I stipulate. My point in making these comments is not to say, oh, we've done everything wrong. My point is to say, we have been foolish in delaying the inevitable. It's foolish to delay the inevitable until you get hit with major pain with, because reserves are good. They bring peace. You know, to the extent that this is a family that loves each other and cares about their children, reserves brings peace of mind. It brings an ability to make decisions in an environment of security and safety, not an environment of panic. So, you know, the reserves frankly serve everyone, you know, and it's been, frankly, it's been fear of association's reaction. And so, look, my point's been made. So, you know, I appreciate your comments, because I do think it's worth stating we've done a lot right, but we should have pulled the trigger sooner.
Absolutely. Okay. Would you like to make some comments?
No, I did my comments. I'm good.
You're good, definitely?
I'll make one more comment, because I'm gonna close with this here. I do wanna thank you. This was a really fabulous report that you put together. It was easy to read. It was easy to understand, and this was good too, but all those parts in fact.
It's gotten harder to read now.
Yeah. But thank you for the time, because I know that took a lot of time.
You're welcome.
All right, that's it.
So the budget as it is now is based on what we've already negotiated?
Correct.
Our options are approve this budget as it is, or don't approve what's here.
And you have to by the 30th.
By the 30th. What happens if you don't approve the budget? Not that it's...
So we had a conversation with the county today. Really, we need to approve it tonight because we run it out in the paper to say we are going to approve a budget tonight. So we do need to approve something tonight. If we don't submit a budget to the county by June 30th, which is the legal deadline, then they legally hold our portionments. They don't give us any money, and they cannot process any of our forms, any forms.
So you can't pay your bills.
You know, they process all of our...
So here you are, three days ago, both passed that, but we can't pay our bills. Isn't that nice?
But this is more than just three days ago. You've been receiving reports all throughout the year.
We didn't receive something, I understand that, but it's, it's...
Okay, I got that. So then I understand that.
And that's not entirely, we don't know that for a dead bank certainly, that we can't pay our bills. I mean, it's a likelihood, you know, it creates a problem, but it's, it's not, it's, you know, we have the money to pay our bills. We, they just, the county just won't let us pay our bills.
No, they, they're the ones who actually process our checks.
I understand, but it's our money.
But they won't process our checks.
I understand that. But it's the county that wouldn't really be allowing us to pay our bills, not us.
Susan Carleen is here, so why don't we ask her?
She's just up there somewhere. It's in the education, Education Section 4212A stipulates that if the district does not submit a budget, that their proportionate shall be withheld by the county.
So it's a state income.
Okay, so now...
It's state education, then.
So we say we pass this budget, but then we pass this budget because there is concern here that in fact we are going at our reserves, and this is not somewhere where we wanna go. And you're saying that, yes, we now have to pay attention to it. How does that happen? I mean, is that something that's going to now, we're gonna start doing something different? Is this something that's initiated by the board saying, you need to go forth forward, and this is what you need to do in order to make this different? I mean...
So I would just back up a little bit and agree with what Dr. Hovey just said. You know, leave him all along. I know Chris is saying, well, we only got this three days ago. You're right, you only got this document. It was published last Thursday. But what you're seeing, you know, the budget for 1413, it's actually a little better than what we've been talking about at the interim report. So I always like to say, you start seeing a budget three years before it ever comes, you know? You're technically seeing your 1415 budget for the first time.
You haven't surprised us with this.
So we're not surprised, so there's no surprises.
But the reserves have also gone up as well.
Yes, the reserves have been going up. So I think to answer your question, that right now, we have, we have a budget, and personally, I've talked about this a lot, Stephanie, you know, our recommendation, obviously, the staff has to date, improve the budget, because this document right now, this is the best information that we have right now for revenues expenditure, so what we have. Now, we know the budget changes all year long. So now, we know, Mitch is leaving, but we all know we need to do something. We need to start finding cuts or think places we can save money right now. We know we have dates, that we're gonna be setting dates to come back, once we get really updated information. The next two really big pieces are enrollments, see how many kids come in, because that can change our revenues too. And then also, we need to end the year. Once we close it, right now, we have a projected deficit next year for like 2, 2, 3 quarter million dollars, right? Well, we'd probably make up a million dollars of that right away, just in the, in the close. So now you're 1 and 3 quarters short that you're going, that we're going into our reserves. 1 and 3 quarter million on a $100 million budget, yeah, it's a loss, and we don't wanna do that, but that's really not a lot of money.
You meant it's a lot, it's a big percentage of the reserve.
13 million. Well, 13 million, 1 million, 1, 2 million. So, yeah, it's money. It's money. I'm not, I'm just saying, it's not like the huge amount that it's possible.
I also wanna, I wanna remind everybody that staff, I mean, I remember Gary and Mitch and Susan using the phrase in various iterations, that's what this money is for, a rainy day with respect to reserves. So this staff accepted guidance, this board accepted guidance to come down this path. And I remember our board workshops, and, you know, for most of this board, accepted furlough days, accepted class size increases, accepted the expenditure of reserves to get us to this point. So these are choices that this board's made to get us to this point, that we could have made different decisions, that we will make, I bet, I hope, next year.
So, but for this year, I don't think we're, you know, again, our budget is always changing. So I think, I think the answer to your question is, you know, if the board, I mean, I think we're all in agreement, we don't want two deficits spent, but I don't wanna tell the board what to do. It seems to me like, you know, you guys are gonna be talking, if you have not already, to our new superintendent to say, hey, we need to turn that around, bring us something better for a interim or before then. So, and that's, I assume, is what's going to be our charge for next year, because, I mean, we're gonna be working on that. Nothing else. Steve and I are gonna be working on that, right? And Helen's gonna help us. Craig's gonna help us.
Craig's gonna help.
We know, we know we need to turn that. We need to continue the good work that's been done, because I don't want to underestimate that. You guys have done a lot, and I've only been, Steve and I have been here a year, right? And you guys have done a lot before we got here. And it's just, we have to keep, we have to keep doing it, and we need to move.
Thank you.
Because reserves were bound down in that eight or nine...
Yeah, the reserves have grown the last five years.
Yeah.
But it's, you're gonna do this, you know, it went up slowly, and it's gonna go down sharply.
Unless we, you know, negotiated a new contract.
Now, there is an option, and there's complications, but we could direct staff to get rid of these reserves and place them in the area of salary reductions, because we have sunshined salaries as a point of discussion in our negotiations. Now, I understand, you know, that we are, the question there is, you know, do we have an agreement? Well, no, but we can negotiate for agreement. We, you know, there are hard paths, if we wanna decide to not pass this budget, you know, we can pass a budget by July 1st. You know, we would have to work hard, we'd have to meet soon, they'd have to scramble, but we could do it.
But again, you really can't, because you have to publicly, you have to have a public notice of the meeting to meet in advance of when you're gonna, what you're going to discuss. This public hearing that we're having right now.
Well, I can tell you, on my part, I'd be willing to see, I don't believe that the fallout of the county withholding our payments would be, they'd figure a way, we'd come up, we'd negotiate something, we, there's no way.
Chris, I wanna tell you something. I have a thought. One day, I substituted Todd, okay? And I didn't realize that my license had lapsed on like a Monday. I substituted on Tuesday, and my license was renewed on Wednesday. So, there was one day there, okay, that I worked, that my license had, was in default. So, I didn't, I didn't get paid. And I said, oh, how come I didn't get paid? And they said, because your license was out for that day, okay? So, I said, okay, that money was budgeted by Fullerton School District, okay? And they saved that money, okay? Since I am not legally entitled to get that money, can I direct it to be given to Fullerton School District as a donation? Nope. It's gone, it just sits there.
Well, if you would've gotten a lawyer, that would not have stuck. There's no way they can withhold that money from you. And there's a big, you know, I appreciate the story, but that's one person. The county...
The county can do things, right?
Well, they can, and I really, I really don't believe the county's gonna withhold payment to staff, because we wanna avoid deficit spend.
Well, they will, Chris, because they cannot, because they cannot cut checks, so they will not cut checks.
The code says shall. It's not, it's not a permissive code.
Whatever. Then you know what, then you know what, they get paid a couple weeks later.
Okay, so here's the case.
It's okay.
Do you wanna call for the vote?
Do we have to close our public hearing?
Oh, yeah.
Is there any more for the...
Yeah, you're not too...
Okay.
I'm going to, Susan, thank you.
You're welcome.
Steve, thank you for the whole staff. Rachel, Becky, Nathan. And we wanna thank everyone for increasing the pot that we're spending down. Do I have any public comments before I close the public session? Yes?
Okay, of course.
Of course, I'm on that. Well, before you start, do I need to get a slip?
We'll need information about name and your name.
I should, I bet I can know how I should do that. Thank you.
Hello, thank you for having me. My name's Lisa Palomino, and I'm a proud parent and proud resident of Fullerton for more than 10 years. I have a child at Hermosa, and I have a child that lives there at Vista, and I also am an educator as well. But I wanted to thank you first of all for having our 12 million dollars in our reserves. I am currently an educator, and we do not, we have not had them. We have had some fear, pay decreases for our teachers, our classifieds, we've had increased class sizes to 36 students per classroom, and the effects that I've seen for the students, but also the teachers, and the demoralization has been drastic. So, I want to commend you for having your 12 million dollars in reserve, and I do also respect your willingness to keep our reserves, but also not at the cost to our teachers and our students.
Well, how do you do that?
Well, you know, I think before, I think after the May budget and also the election, I think then we'll have a better, true assessment of the monies that we will be receiving from the state. I think that, after that happens, I think that's really the best time to look at your negotiations with your unions and see what drastic cuts you really do need to take. So, thank you, thank you very much.
What district do you work for?
Southwood Year.
Oh, yeah.
We have 10 furlough days, and I've had about 15% decrease to my pay, no step increases. But thank you so much.
I'm going to declare this meeting closed at 29. Thank you. And I would like to make one suggestion here, before we take a vote, before I ask for a motion and vote, I'd like my board to think about having a study session around the end of July, because our new superintendent won't even be coming here until the 14th or 15th of July. And I'd like to have a study session, because that would give him a week or two to work with you all, looking over our budget. Not a lot of time, but at least, I know that's his first and primary focus, to look at doing more for this coming school year.
Prioritizing.
Prioritizing, and maybe even coming up with some ideas. And if I could get a consensus on that, we could give that directive to be passed forward. How does everybody feel about that?
Any day, fine.
It's a great idea.
Okay, so can you all set that up as a priority? Carmen, I guess that falls to you to tell them.
I would be happy to make sure that that happens.
Okay, would you make sure...
Yeah, you have four days, three days.
I'll make sure it gets set up.
Lay duck, make sure that gets set up.
Can I ask you how much, would you be needing a lot more information than I give you already?
No.
Because I'm gonna be on vacation, and I wanna make sure I get you enough information.
Yes, I think the point is that we wanna talk. I know that Dr. Fleckta said he had a lot of questions about our law. He'd already given a brief review to our budget, and he asked some questions of both me and Jen, if we were not wise enough to answer. We had an idea, but then we thought we better take it back in case we're in error. And we, we do wanna see that blue line rise, because I'm very fearful of that red line, and it's so devastating. So, we wanna do cuts even before, if possible, before that November election, because as Lynn says, this evolves and changes on a regular basis, and we wanna make it even more regular. Okay, with that in mind, I'd like to hear a motion about our budget.
I move that we adopt the 2012, 2013 budget, all funds, and acknowledge the dedication and work of our finance department. I know they don't go into this blind, they go into it very knowing, past history, future history, what's going to happen, where we're at, and I would like to acknowledge your hard work and efforts. You do a great job for us, and we really appreciate that.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
I think we've had a lot of dialogue, I think we need more. Do we have, let's have a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Absolutely not.
You're not opposing, or you are opposing?
I am, no.
No, thank you.
I'm opposing.
It's a 4-1, and we'll move on to 2B now. Resolution 1112-32 for authorization of signatures. And I guess Mitch doesn't wanna come and sign anymore, but so, do I have a motion?
Move to B.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? 5-0. 2C.
Move to C, sorry.
Thank you, that's great. All those in favor?
We have a second.
7, we're voting on 2C, which is signatures for the county.
On documents.
Okay, superintendent schools. Well, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Jen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Approved lease schedule number two between Fullerton School District and CSI Leasing Incorporated, effective on July 2nd. Do we wanna hear about this? Oh, wait, first, I need a motion of some sort.
I approve lease schedule number two between the Fullerton School District and CSI Leasing, which will be effective July 2nd, 2012.
Do I have a second?
I move to, I didn't say move to approve, I move to approve.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, would you like to give us some comments?
So, this is our normal lease, we do every year, it's a three-year lease for new laptops for our laptop program. This is actually fewer machines than last year, we had 350 for the 12, 13 school year, 275, and the payments, three payments, annual payments of 101,610 dollars.
The first payment being due at the end of the year after the parents have paid.
Correct, correct.
So, the children have it for a year before the parents pay, and if...
That we have to pay.
That we have, before, okay, and before you have to pay.
Correct.
Exactly. And for bad debt, how is that covered?
So, the Bad Foundation has been covering the bad debt of the parents each year.
Correct.
Technology Foundation. I'm sorry.
What is it?
I meant that.
Actually, we have really done a much more efficient job of billing, and the bad debt has gone down every year, and the Technology Foundation has backfilled it more than it has done to do with the bad debt.
Thank you.
Music to my ears.
Okay, it's worth coming to dinner, huh? Do I have a motion? Oh, I do have a motion. Do I have a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
4-1. May I have approved moving the regular Board of Trustees meeting from July 17th to July 24th? The caveat is, on July 17th, you don't have a superintendent for us.
Well, you're only a second day, so it'd be hard to put together the agenda.
So, he won't just put together an agenda yet.
We move, we move to date to 24th, 17th to 24th.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That was, Beth, second.
Boy, that was, that was a close one right there.
Okay, and we are not going to have 2F, because it isn't ready for tonight. Okay? And so, 2F.
You know, after all of my negative commentary, I do wanna compliment Susan and Steve for, you know, very well putting together the numbers, as much as I disagree with the philosophy to put them together, you know, you guys do a great job of executing the will of the board. It's competently done, and it's easy to follow, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. Now, I have a question. We have a request tonight from two citizens regarding people's addresses, perhaps not accurate. Is this a topic that this board wishes to take up, or is this a report we'd like to ask for from our Child Welfare Attendant's Office?
Are we allowed to talk about it right now?
No.
Because it's not on the agenda, but I could ask you.
You may go.
I think, I think we need, you know...
You found just a high pressure, because what is the board's...
Okay, go ahead, what was your point?
Well, you know, I'm not implying I think we're not doing well with it, but, you know, very moving comments from very reasonable and very upset parents, and I definitely wanna know more about how we're dealing with that, and obviously, we can't, they don't want fines, we don't have the authority to, we actually collect the fines. Well, we don't have the authority on how we can support it anyway, but, you know, I'm concerned with how we do it, but, but...
Well, this is, this we should decide whether we want to...
Yeah, 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 I think we should have a report, I think we should have a report.
I'll second that one.
Because I don't think there's much to discuss until they go to a report.
All those in favor of having a report?
Oh, I know, yeah.
Well, you can have a report, I'm saying first, this second.
And for the minutes, needs to know what it is that we would like to report on.
A report, I would move, you know, my motion, I would say, is a report on how well we think we are doing in verifying, address is where it's necessary.
Procedure, good procedure.
And the procedure, and an explanation of how we do that, and if you have any ideas about how we might improve it, or any way the board can help us, help you improve it and our others.
Chris, wouldn't it be okay in that same dialogue to have a review of our policies?
Well, that's a different action, that's...
Not a review for a vote, I mean, a mention.
Well, in light of that's this part, I would move it also that we, that the agenda is reviewing inter-district transfer, in order of our policy.
Is that your second?
I think it just goes back to my whole priority of transfer, the priority of which people are, the priority that we give people when we're approving transfers. I think that's always something I wanted to look at.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
So, we have part of the policy.
We have two policies, two things we'd like to review, but they sort of go together.
Yeah, but it's not the same either.
Not really.
Okay, so those are two items. Yes, sir.
I would just strongly recommend that you discuss them at two different meetings, because they are so close together, people get totally confused.
Let's do the address one, the address one first, and let's wait.
I don't care which one. Yeah, I think, because I don't, I don't think the hierarchy's not gonna change, if we were to change it, it wouldn't affect it here.
Can I, can I ask a favor on that?
Yeah.
On the, on the first one that you're talking about, I can get that pretty quickly. On the second one, I could use some time, because we got a lot of org, bullying things coming due in August.
We don't need that one for a while anyway. We should wait until school starts.
It's when, it's when it's convenient for you. We're not demanding...
As long as it's in time to change.
I'll get it in time for it.
If you're doing it in the fall, because you've got, don't get...
Yeah, not in this...
But may I, may I ask that on the night that we do each of these, that we notify the family that came tonight, so they have the opportunity to attend either of those meetings, and know that that will be on the agenda? Thank you. Is there anything else that we'd like to take out of this meeting?
Well, I'd like to make sure that Craig knows that this was quite an issue about